Good evening. This is the, welcome to the meeting of the Rutland Town Select Board for Tuesday, December 21st. We are at six o'clock in the municipal hall. Present are Select Board Member Don Chaffee, Mary Ashcroft, and JP Fagnant. On the phone is Sharon Russell, and we'll let you know if and when Select Board Member Joe DiNardo joins us. Please stand and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So reminder that the orders are here to be signed. After JP, I've signed after JP's finished, I'll pass into Don, and then Sharon and Joey can come in. A short, you know, short time to get the checks out, so please do, make sure you do it. So, Select Board minutes, December 7th and December 14th.
Moved to approve.
Motion's been made by JP to approve both sets.
I'll second that, but I have some amendments.
Okay, and all five of us were at both, so Don is seconded. And which one are you going to work the amendments on, Don?
We're, we're looking at December 7th.
Okay.
December 7th, right at the beginning, it says, Fagnant and Chaffie moved to approve the minutes, and Sharon seconded the motion after some clerical changes were made. I believe I made motions to, for corrections to the minutes, and those were the clerical changes that were made. If the clerical changes are made, maybe this is just administrative procedure bill for you, but the reason that you either add or delete or change the minutes of a meeting is so that they can be appended to the next minutes and therefore become part of the record.
Well, we do it a little bit differently, because when the changes are made, I usually have what's going to be the original copy in front of me. I make the changes in ink and then I circulate it, so that becomes the signed copy.
That's correct, and that signed copy should be referred to in these minutes, so that it is part of the official record. So, in any case, I would, I would request that the clerical changes be described in the succeeding minutes.
Even if they're made right on the original minutes?
Absolutely.
Well, I disagree with you. I think we've got it covered.
We have a disagreement, but I believe they should be included here as a matter of record. Okay, on page four.
Okay.
Reviewed the Police Committee meetings, like, and Chaffee suggested some clerical changes to the minutes, again. I would like to see the clerical changes that were suggested be mentioned in these minutes, rather than just have the general statement made. It's not that difficult.
So for that one, you didn't actually make the changes? That's why I said the topics will be discussed specifically at the budget meeting. You talk about making changes, but didn't actually make changes.
And you were also making changes to the Police Committee minutes, which is not Select Board minutes. It's our, our scribe does those changes, so.
When I get to those, I'll suggest that as well.
Anything else?
There's a whole discussion about the unused balance of 54,677,04. JP and I had a discussion of that. It said this will be brought to our town council for review before expenditures are made.
Right.
There's nothing in, there's nothing in this record that refers to the pretty significant conversation that basically JP and I had about, about making sure that we were following proper procedure, since nothing had been voted on by the public before. We haven't, we haven't approved anything yet. We haven't even presented the, the Public Safety Building to the people yet. We're going to do that, but we haven't done it yet. And I think it was agreed that that those monies would be used for planning, architectural design, for presentation to the people at a public meeting, and that's what the discussion was about. I think, you know.
Do you have a specific language change in there?
Yeah, well, you know.
You're pretty close. Why don't we just say, let's see, for the new, for development costs for presentation to the public for the new?
That's, that's basically what we decided, yeah, and that's not in the minutes.
Why don't I just put those right in there?
I don't.
To the public.
And with those particular changes, that's, I have no problems with the minutes.
Okay, motions made and seconded to approve the minutes. I've made that change, and this is, anything on December 14th?
Oh, we're doing these as a batch?
JP made the motion for both.
Oh, okay, all right, December 14th then. In the very first paragraph, where it talks about the payout rate of 2250 per hour, and we're talking about a daytime call-out rate. I specifically asked what the daytime call-out rate would be, and, and the fire chief indicated to me that it would be 2250.
Which is.
So I was left, I was left out of that discussion as well.
You were in the discussion, Don, and it's reflected in the minutes. I don't understand the.
It doesn't say that.
You want your name in there? Is that what you're saying?
Absolutely.
So every time you make a statement, you want your name in the minutes?
No, when there's substantive discussion about a very particular, specific subject, and I make a recommendation, I would like it noted that I was the one that made the recommendation. I'm here on this board to represent the people of the town of Rutland, and when I do so effectively, I would like it noted in the minutes, rather than have my name basically obliterated from the minutes of a meeting as if I weren't even there. And, and this is about the second or third time. It's too bad that it happens to be the Christmas season, but I'm not going to tolerate this anymore. I'm a, I'm a productive member of this board. I'm a very progressive member of this board, and I have constructive suggestions, and when they're made, I would like them noted in there with my name attached to them, just as other people's names are often mentioned in the minutes, and mine isn't. Down in the second paragraph.
I guess I would make the point that many of us step in and comment on many things, and this is not to memorialize any particular Select Board member's contribution to anything. It's just to let the public know what we jointly, as a Select Board, decided. If we all start worrying about getting credit for every idea or every motion, these things are going to be pages and pages long, and it's going to take up all of Bill's time just doing the minutes for meetings.
You're missing, you're missing my point entirely.
I don't think so.
Well, you can think what you think, but when I read the minutes.
Well, let's put it this way, Don. Does anyone want to second Don's motion to add his name?
Not a motion. I'm making a, I'm making, I'm making a suggestion to correct the minutes because there was an omission. And as far as I can, as far as I can remember, as long as I've been on this board, no member that's made a correction to the minutes to have something added that was, that was obviously left out has ever been denied that opportunity. So if you want to deny me, that's fine. I'm down in the second paragraph.
On page one?
On page one.
Okay.
We're talking about the admin budget for the Police Department.
That's correct.
Not only have I been very specific in budget, in Police Committee meetings about that particular subject, but I was very opinionated as well in this particular discussion about the budget allowing for a 35-hour work week, and I specifically asked the chief if that also included payment of the supplemental insurance plan, which is what we, which is, which we had discussed and agreed to in the Police Committee meeting. And he indicated that, yes, it included the supplemental insurance, which is an amount somewhere in the vicinity of $2,000 or more dollars per year, 200 and some odd per month. And that was completely left out of this, these particular minutes.
Well, I was a member of the Police Committee, as was Sharon, and I know she and I talked quite a bit, but we're not quoted there extensively. In fact, I'm not quoted at all on that discussion. So I guess I'm back to the point. We all contribute, Don, and we don't all need to see our names.
I'm not talking about whether or not I, my name is in there. I'm talking about the fact that I specifically asked if the supplemental insurance was included in there, and there's nothing mentioned in the minutes about the supplemental insurance being included, and I want to make.
You have a suggested change then.
Yes.
Just give me the language.
Was adjusted to allow for a 35-hour work week and also payment of the supplemental insurance plan amount.
Anything else?
No, that's fine.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt the minutes of the December 4th, sorry, 14th and December 7th Select Board minutes. There is the change that I have added on page one relating to supplemental insurance plan. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 I think I heard you say aye, Sharon. You cut off a bit.
Yes.
Okay. And I'll vote aye, so. Okay. So, let's see, we now have done the minutes, which we now take public comment from folks who are joining us either virtually or in person, and they're not otherwise on the agenda. Byron, what you got?
Mary.
Good evening.
Here this evening to request the board reconsider its actions from last Tuesday in regard to this proposal that was emailed to me during the week. I don't believe it's, I believe it's somewhat baseless, in that there's nothing in the personnel policy that even remotely uses the word prorating whatsoever. Other employees in the past have exited this town at different times of the year, all received their vacation time in full. Those are any half of, any unused sick time. So I'd like the board to please reconsider that and take that into consideration.
Okay, and do you have your own calculations? Are they on one of the?
My calculations were given to you, Mary, in the form of time sheets that were properly filled out. I gave those to you, and I gave copies to Carrie.
Okay, so.
That was on the 24th.
And that's entirely possible, Byron. I didn't study them. So I guess I'm asking you, there was a piece of paper that was circulated, and it had three different scenarios on it?
I wouldn't know anything about that.
You weren't sent that at all?
No.
Okay. So I guess I'm trying to figure out, what do we compare what we approved to? You want me to go dig out the 24th, which probably Bill has? What you submitted on the 24th and rerun your calculations?
Well, those are, they weren't calculations, they were just time sheets. So you can look at, you know, each, each time sheet has indicated up in the upper right-hand corner what that labor is for that particular two-week time period.
Does it also accumulate sick days?
There was one separate.
Okay.
For sick days.
All right, and vacation days?
Well, all the vacation time is being used up since the 25th.
Right.
Well, that's what was on, that's what's on the time sheets, are the, are the are the days that are holidays and days that are vacation days, which were used up from starting on the 25th of November to the 31st of December.
Okay. I, I have none of that stuff in front of me, so I'm just trying to figure out if we have what we need to look at, and if you have the information on there that clearly says what your position is. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Then I have to get together with, I'll either have to redo the time sheets or get together with Carrie and get copies of those time sheets from her.
Okay, well, Bill may have them. Did I, because I.
I don't, I don't have them.
Okay, so you might, you might not have to recreate them. She might have them. I think under our personnel policy, isn't there an appeal, right, that a town employee has to, you know, raise an issue like this?
Yes, I'm not sure if it's in regards to that, or if it's in regard, in regard to disciplinary action.
Well, it's.
If this is considered disciplinary action, well, then I'll have to take a different route.
Well, I didn't consider it so, but I was just trying to figure out what you were owed for your vacation and sick days.
I will be glad.
And I will be the first one to admit, I was not part of the, the committee meeting, and so I don't know. I'm going to have to do my own calculations, so.
Are the time sheets in the, you go over there?
Right now?
Can I ask a? Mary, may I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Um, Bye. Would you be willing to come into a Highway Committee meeting and sit down with us and explain to us exactly what you want? It's pretty hard not having stuff in front of us, and I would, you know, I would appeal to you to just come in so I can sit and, and listen to exactly what you're explaining, if you don't mind?
Sure.
Okay, you'd be willing to do that. So he says, yes, Sharon. In answer to your question, the payroll numbers do have, it looks like your sheet's filled out, okay, and it's got some calculations by Carrie, and then it's got, it's like a calendar with vacation and all of that marked. So I'm guessing that's what you were looking, and that's the information that they'll have, so.
Okay.
It's here, and you're willing to meet with Highway, and Highway is willing to meet with you, so let's do that, okay? All right, thank you, Byron. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay.
Thanks, Byron.
Sharon, did you say something?
I just said thank you to Byron.
All right, yes, thanks, Byron. Okay. Now we have, is Eric Hall still on the call?
Yes.
Okay, so if there's no objection, I'm going to move Eric up. Eric is the person designated by the Rutland Regional Planning Commission to advise towns on use of ARPA funds. He is not the person, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, not the person determining yes or no, but he is here to give us guidance and as best he can. We may have some questions, and I suspect he's willing to dig in and do some research for us, right? Okay, welcome, Eric.
Thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Very good.
Sharon, can you? Sharon?
What?
Can you hear Eric okay? Say something, Eric.
Yep, very good. I think she said yes, so. Thanks for having me tonight. Thanks for the introduction. So I am a regional planner at the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, and in my role and tasked with helping towns kind of dive into the eligibility and public input discussion regarding the ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act, funds that, that you've received. So to date, you should have received half of the funds that you'll be getting. The second payment, the local and county, should come in the summer of 2022. All funds must be obligated by December 31st, 2024, and all funds must be expended by December 31st, 2026. Many funds not spent by the end of 2026 must be returned to Treasury. So, just a brief overview, the goal with these funds is to, you know, in implementing them is to prioritize good governance, leverage your ARPA aid. There's, you know, additional funds other than these municipal ARPA funds that are working their way through state agencies, so leveraging all of your funds is important to remember. And then investing in best uses for a long-term recovery. You know, economic recovery is, you know, the goal here, because we're, you know, we're trying to recover from this COVID-19 public health emergency. So what can you spend the money on? There's, there's seven broad categories. One is public health. Two is negative economic impacts. Services to disproportionately impacted communities. Premium pay is, is one thing, and I'll touch on that a little later. Infrastructure, specifically water, sewer, and broadband. Revenue replacement, which is, I'm sure you've heard some about, and then administrative costs associated with, with the funding. There's expenditure categories, part of one of Treasury's interim final rule appendices. And so those categories outline the seven broad areas, and then have specific lines that you'll be using to code your projects when the time comes to fill out the annual reports. So what you cannot spend money on, so you can't use the funds for federal match. You can't put the ARPA funds into pension funds. Infrastructure that's not directly addressed in the ARPA eligibility guidelines is not eligible. And then you can't put the funds in ready-day funds or financial reserves or pay any outstanding debts. So, you know, things to consider, you can pool your funds with other municipalities, you can transfer your funds to nonprofits or other eligible third-party organizations. In both cases, the projects that the funds are going toward need to be ARPA-eligible, and it is still up to you as the town to report on those funds, even if they are pooled into a regional project. You'll still need to account for those in your annual reporting. So, you know, the, the, the big push is to take your time and be patient, think big. You know, like I mentioned before, leverage the funding with, with other available funding that's out there. And so, you know, just kind of the next steps, the, the first reporting deadline is for the period from when you've received the funds through the end of March, and that report will be due at the end of April. There is some new compliance and reporting guidance that's been released, and, you know, following up here, I can, I'll make sure to share all of this information with you. I have been sending out some, some periodic updates to the region's municipalities with some of this information, but things that I touch on today, I can send you directly as well. So, you know, reporting and guidance is going to be important, and, and that's, you know, some, some things that I can send along. And I guess the, the last thing with this overview is the final decision on how to spend the funds, you know, lies with the municipality, and, you know, so the legislative body, so the Select Board, can make the final decision on, on how to spend those funds, but getting public input is really important, and like I mentioned before, thinking big and, you know, projects that you know, are, are going to have a lasting impact are, are great things to consider. So I guess first, I'd, I'd like to open up for, you know, for any questions from the board about the general ARPA outlook, and then, you know, I I did get some preliminary project ideas that Bill sent over, and so I can speak on those a little bit, if you'd like.
Any Select Board member want to ask any questions to start off?
I do.
Hi, Sharon.
I do, Mary. Yeah. My, my first question is, you've said you can't give us a yes or no on projects. And, and another one was the infrastructure guidelines. Do you have those guidelines?
Sure, I can, I can definitely speak on both of those. So the yes or no, you know, the point there is, is that lies with the municipality to say, yes, we're going to spend money on this, or no, we're not. What I am available for is helping point you in the right direction as far as eligibility interpretation, how a project may or not fall within that eligibility criteria. You know, there's a great network that's being established of the RPCs in conjunction with the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, that's, you know, kind of come together as a team to discuss project ideas, but, you know, there's also the availability of the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, who has, you know, an ARPA-focused, you know, a, a person that's, that's job is to help the municipalities as we, you know, as they work through this process. So we can always run questions up the ladder. Those resources are available, and you know, it's, there's still final, Treasury's final rule is still, has still not been released. We're still working out their interim final rule. And so, you know, there is still some, you know, some, some information that, that we're learning, and, and there's always new, new resources and, and things being developed, so as all that comes together, you know, the ability to provide a clear answer will, you know, will come. But I guess one thing to add with that, too, there are certain, certain areas and, and certain projects that, you know, definitely are looking like they're, they're eligible. You know, one thing, digitization of, of land records. Improvements, you know, one of the public health areas, you know, improving ventilation in, in public. Um, you know, improving, uh, ventilation in, in public settings or, um. You know, kind of prevention in congregate settings, uh, those type of projects are. Looking like they're eligible, um, you know, as well as improving technology or, or cybersecurity. As, you know, clearly, um, hybrid style meetings seem to be something that's going to stick around, so. Those are, those are things that. You know, depending on the list that the town has put together and, and how those projects, um, are prioritized, we can. We can work together in, in discussing those and, and, um, you know, having that eligibility conversation.
Thank you Eric.
Other questions from the select board, Sharon, did, did that answer your question?
It did, but I want to state one more thing, you would mention giving money to nonprofits. Um, having run a nonprofit for 30 years, I just retired, I, I think all of our board members need to be aware. That the opposite economic opportunity of the state of Vermont, which disburse funds. To nonprofits has already got ARPA funds coming their way, so it would be who. Me that we don't even look at sending that money to my nonprofits, I, I think there's enough in the town that we need to do. That's all I have.
Yeah, and you, you know, you, you really, um, kind of hammer home the point of leveraging your funding. With, with that comment.
Other questions?
Eric. Don Chaffey here, uh, do you? Do you have access? Uh, in your, in your position, do you have access to information that we don't have access to?
Not really, um, you know, the Vermont League of Cities and Towns website has. A lot of, um. Useful resources that are all linked on their ARPA resources page, a lot of which is, um. You know, information that, that I use when, when speaking to a municipality, whether it's, um. You know, the. Expense. List I mentioned before, um, you know. There's. There's not a lot out there that. You or the public doesn't have access to. So you can, you can find everything from frequently asked question documents to, um, you know, the, the. Treasury's interim final rule, um, and, you know, that's a lot of what, what we're working off, I mean, there. You know, there are, we have a, a team meeting where, you know, we, um. All of the RPCs come together with the Vermont League of Cities and Towns to collaborate, but, um. You know, those resources that we're using are, are really all published publicly. Um, most of which are on the Vermont League of Cities and Towns website.
Okay, the, the reason I ask you that question is that. It may be helpful to us. In making determinations. If we knew if there was a database being assembled nationwide. Because Rutland Town is a town of four thousand some odd people. Uh, do you know how many towns there are of 4,200 people in the United States of America? I see you smiling, so you know where I'm going with this.
Right. Yeah, you make a really good point, um. And like I said, you know, we're, we're still kind of early in this whole process and, and resources are constantly being developed. And so a tool for municipalities to share ideas. Um, you know, is that kind of what you're getting at, where you can compare, you know, a town that's of similar size and, and see what. Projects have, have come to the top of their priority list or, um, you know, or just are unique. And, and may also fit into this area, um, you know, that's going to be a very useful tool and. I'm not a hundred percent sure on, um, kind of the status of that resource. But, uh, you know, I do believe it's, it's been talked about, you know, about putting one together.
Well, we're a small town and obviously we have to consider what our townspeople feel are priorities. Um, you represent a more, a little bit more global approach in terms of regional commission. And of course, regional commissions throughout the state represent an even more global approach, so maybe your recommendation. To the powers that be. That a database such as that be assembled or available to us would be really, really helpful. And I think that could give us a lot of guidance. So, just, uh. We'll let it go with that.
So Eric, we've been looking at the lost revenue, um, calculations, do you know if. There is a review, is it the Vermont League of Cities and Towns that would be helpful to review? The calculations and make sure they're correct, is anybody doing that, or, I know there's a calculator and, and that has been used.
And, and so that is the most recent calculator that the Vermont League of Cities and Towns released in conjunction with Nemrick. Do you know?
Yes.
Okay, yep, so. Nemrick is available to review those calculations. Um, I'm not sure if there's a fee associated with that review. But, I think that was part of tha- that collaboration, um. Given that the majority of Vermont municipalities use, you know, the Nemrick system or service, um. It's my understanding that Nemrick is available to review those, those calculations. And I'm glad to hear that, that you guys have gone ahead and done that because, um. You know, maybe initially, and hard telling from where I stand right here, but whether or not you. Showed a calculation that, 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 um, reflected what your initial thoughts might be of that. Um, you know, area, uh. I guess I'd be interested to know.
Well, it, my understanding is if. And, um, any money that we can calculate as being lost revenue. We can move into our general fund and that basically frees it up for use anywhere without the other restrictions, am I correct on that?
That is correct.
Okay, so the more bucks we can find as lost revenue, the better off we are. If we want flexibility, yeah, okay.
Yep, yep, and so doing that calculation is how you're going to, um, determine that amount.
Okay.
And yeah, and so I would, I would encourage you, I would encourage you to reach out to Nemrick for, for that calculation confirmation.
Okay, good, thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Mary, this is Carrie, um, I wanted to, hi, I wanted to ask a question that, um. Goes along with the, what you were just discussing. Um, so Eric, um. I, I did the calculations the way that, um, Nemrick gave the instructions to do that. But after talking with our auditor, there's a couple of adjustments that I think we're going to need to look into, so. I do have plans on calling Nemrick to make sure that they can look that over, um, but my question. Deals with, um. Is that like, so say I got a number after doing this calculation, um, is that a final number? If it's reviewed, or are we averaging the numbers over a period of time? Cause at the end of the instructions, it a- asked us to keep doing this every six months. Do you have any idea if that's the final calculation, or are we. Using numbers over time to come up with an average?
So, uh, let's see, it's my understanding that, um. Let's see here. Do you know, did you use the 4.1% or did you use the average of your last three years growth?
Yeah, I followed the instructions and it, and it had me go back to, um, through the past three years of reports.
Okay. Um. Let's see. I'm not a hundred percent sure, I can, I can definitely look into, um, the answer to that question a little further. It, it was my understanding that, um. Based on the 4.1%. calculation, that may have been the one time. One-time calculation, but. I can't say for sure, so let me look into that further for you and I can, um, I can follow up with you on that.
Okay, any answers, you can always email me, um. Anything that you find out, um, I'm just trying to keep up with this as you guys are, so, um. And, and Mary, side note, did you get the, um, the email conversation in front of you? That I left for you?
Thank you, yes.
Okay, and that goes along with it too, okay. Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome, and I guess I'll just say, um, you know, Carrie, being the, the clerk and treasurer and, and. Um, you know, anybody working on projects as, as when you get to that point. Um, just making sure to, um, be diligent, diligent about documentation. Um, and then kind of the, the final format for, for these is just making sure everything is scanned in. And, and compile those PDFs, um, for kind of ease of electronic reporting.
Okay, I will do that.
Good, thank you, and you're going to warn us about not spending what, $750,000 in any one single fiscal year? Because that would trigger a single audit, right?
Right, so those rules do apply to these funds, um, so those are things that. You know, single audit, single audit rules are, are things that you do have to keep in mind, given the amount of funds that you'll, you know, be receiving.
Yep, Carrie's been right on us on that one, so we are suitably warned all about. Any other, um, questions or comments or anything from select board members or anyone else? If not, Eric, I want to thank you very much and it sounds like you're willing to have us stay in touch with you as these questions come up.
Yeah, I, I'll just close with, um, you know, I'll, I'll follow up with, with you with some, uh, helpful resources. Um, I encourage. You know, the, the town, um, get public input, you know, I think, I think that's an important part of this process. And, yeah, I'm, I'm a, a resource that's, that's here and available, so, um, don't hesitate to reach out.
Okay, um, Eric, you may not know this, but Rutland Town had two public listening sessions, so. Um, and we developed from that a, a chart of something like 24 different ideas that came in, um, from various folks, so we, we. Have started the process of listening carefully, so appreciate your help.
Alright, you're welcome, have a great evening.
You too.
Thanks.
Okay, so I think we can. Move to our usual schedule, so Carrie Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer.
Alright, hi again. Um, hi, hi, so, um. I have about four things and they all have to do with deadlines, so, um, at least they'll be reflected in the, uh, the minutes. Um, so I just wanted to remind everyone that. Uh, obviously Christmas is coming, Thursday and Friday town hall is closed, that was just a quick reminder. Um, we are moving into the town meeting, um, portion of the year very quickly. And I wanted to note that there is a petition deadline of January 13th of, um, next year. In case you, um, need to either get your, yourself on the ballot. And you haven't been on the ballot or you're rerunning, um. And I believe it's 1% of signatures, um, for people that have been on the ballot. Of our registered voters, registered voters are around 3,200. Um, so you want to get at least 32, um, but you always want to get more than that. Just in case they tell you they're registered voters and they're really not. Um, so that is the first deadline, um, and. I wanted to ask the board, um, about the pre-town meeting, uh, date. And Mary, we've bounced back a couple of, of dates and, um, I'm wondering if we could finalize. Or if it had already been finalized a date so that I can, um, get the warning all set. And, um, contact the Herald and do all the stuff that I need to do with that. Um, had you already?
Let's take, let's take a look at, um, new business item B, which is Board to Discuss Setting Pre-Town Meeting Date. We did talk about it at our last meeting, the school board suggested the 10th, which we thought was too early. We said.
11th, I thought the school board was looking for the 11th.
Well, I'm sorry, it could be the 11th JP, um. And then we looked at later in the month and we were bumping up against the, what, six weeks requirement to get everything to the voters, so. Um, I understand from conversations that Bill has had with the school folks that the new proposal is January 18th. We're back to the 11th?
When? We are back to the 11th.
We're back to the 11th, Carrie, what does that do? To your ability and Bill, because you folks pulled together some of the basic information so we can present it at our pre-town meeting if it is on the 11th.
That's okay with me, um, my, uh, we're pretty close about getting most of the stuff that we needed for town report and all of that. Um, so since the petition deadline is the 13th anyway, the 11th works. Um, it's just, it just needs to be finalized.
Alright, so I, this is the first I'd heard that we were back to the 11th, so it would be good if I could get a little heads up, but not always do. Is there a motion to approve the old January 11th as our pre-town meeting?
So moved.
Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
It's made in second and any further discussion? If not, all in favor of setting January 11th, please say aye.
Alright. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries and we've set the pre-town meeting, okay, what else have we got Carrie?
Thank you, Mary, um, and just as a side note, I guess the 18th was, uh, just for you, Mary, um. Was discussed, we thought it was going to be a good date, but I guess the school had some obligations that they could not get out of. So that was the reasoning for bouncing back to the 11th. Um, and last thing to reminder that the second installment for taxes are due on the 10th. Um, since we are going right into holiday mode and then coming right back, I just wanted to put that out there. The reminders will be on all of the, um, the media means that we use, um, but. Um, now they're here, so hopefully we got all of that covered. And the very last thing, promise there's nothing else after this, um. I, there's a potential, and I say very high potential, um, that I will be out for about a week. Very soon, um, this is all depending on, so I have a prior, um. A surgery date coming up for December 30th. And, um, I have about a week after that that I think I should be out. Now I'm saying potential because of COVID and it's in Dartmouth and they're not allowing a whole lot of people. So it's kind of still up in the air, um, putting it out there because if Susan is the only one in there, just kind of. You know, check in on her for the good week, see if she is, needs any help, would be greatly appreciated, especially around this time of year. I really tried to avoid it, but it was, um, not avoidable at this point. Um, so I would love if I am out, if people could just make sure she's doing okay.
Okay, um, Carrie, we had put some money in the budget last year and I'm not sure how much was used, but just for extra office help. Have you, is there's any left in that, you can maybe have somebody come in and cover some?
No, we, we exceeded that, um, for, because of the, uh, yeah, uh, for the budget, however, um. However, um, I would love to put it out there um in the public's ear if they know of anyone. That um really is good at this sort of stuff, um and they would like some. Maybe a couple of extra hours here and there. Um, we are kind of looking for. That during the election season, so um, you know, put that out there. Keep your ears open, eyes open, that would be great.
Okay. Any questions from select board members uh for our Town Clerk and Treasurer? If not, thank you very much, Carrie. Appreciate your work.
Thanks, Mary.
Okay.
I wasn't sure if they were coming to the, if they're, Jason Walt are not on the agenda, so I don't know if you want to.
I'm sorry?
Jason and Walt were not on the agenda, so I wouldn't.
Uh, right, so we don't have highway, so yeah, okay. We should probably add highway to future agendas. Okay, thank you. Um, well, since you're here, who wants to go? We'll do highway now. Okay, Walt.
As we said, the trucks are all up and running, no issues, no issues with the storm. Um, we're just doing our regular day-to-day, trying to play catch-up. We've been uh cleaning up a lot of the downed trees and brush from the first storm and the windstorms. Had the scales all installed, we're using them as of Saturday, we started using them. Which they're working fine and collecting the data. Um. We had a mess of trash, we picked up on Boardman Hill, Quarterline Road and uh Simons. We had, I don't know, five or six bags and.
People just tossing them out?
Yeah, Boardman Hill's getting bad.
Okay.
Down in the dip, that mean it's some of the stuff they're throwing into Brook and.
Yeah.
So, but uh, it's a, Quarterline's just a normal, you know, goes and spells.
Yeah.
Um. Other than that, it's, you know, just day-to-day.
There's a place where we might locate discreetly a game camera anywhere up where they're throwing that trash in.
What's that?
If we put a game camera discreetly up where.
The only thing is up there, probably somebody would shoot it.
Yeah.
Cause there's, you know, they shoot it, everything.
Right.
You know, something like that, they spot it, I'm sure they'll. Shoot it, but I mean, we talked to Billy about that and I don't know if that's got any suggestions or.
Or not. Probably game can be done. Is there a particular spot they're dumping off? Garbage, is there any particular spots they dump?
Yeah, it's right in the, to go down Boardman Hill to the dip where the Brook crosses the road, it's on the right-hand side, it's. It's uh, I mean, there's a lot of stuff you can't get to down over the bank.
Is there anything in the bags?
We uh. We found, we give Teddy back, that was a couple of months ago. He was, I don't know if he ever found out who it was, but uh. And we, we used it, this stuff this time was just scattered, you know, cans and.
Yeah.
Deer parts and.
Oh, alright.
That sort of, I mean, the deer parts is, the animals are gonna take care of it anyways. But uh, you know, usually it's household garbage, we will look through it.
Walt, is there any, is there any bag, bag stuff that they dump a bag off?
Well, most of it was just scattered, you know, everything.
Is there any identifiable?
We picked it up and put it in bags.
Is there any identifiable stuff like letterhead that you could pick and I?
See if they're, if it's full bags, we will, we'll go through it and find, find a name. Like I said, we. We'd give Teddy a name here a while back. But that's what we usually look for.
Yeah.
That's.
Uh, I do know on Creek Road, somebody who was apparently distributing a newspaper, not, not necessarily a local one. Let loose with just all of the apparent leftovers and and my neighbor called up the newspaper and complained. So, you know, if folks want to do little things like that, maybe that will ease some of the, the trash out there.
That's all I have.
Well, thank you very much. Any questions from the select board for Walt? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, Jason, too. You got a report too?
Yeah, for water and sewer.
Oh yeah, come on up. Good. So we're gonna, we're gonna take Jason on water and sewer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So on Wednesday, uh, December fifteenth, we had a water main breakdown on Sewer Road.
Yes.
Uh, city went out there and fixed it up. I have not received any information, nor a bill on what they did. Um, but I will have to reach out to them here soon, possibly tomorrow, try to get some contact information to find out. Just to see what they, what they did, we know that there was a break there, but. Um, we don't know what the extent of it was and what they had to replace.
Okay, the pending question at one point was, was it, was it the, on the the town side of the. Um, the interconnect or was it on the private owner's side? Do we know?
Yeah, we have not uh, they have a, they had a dog up there when we were there and it was closer to. Um, Alderman's and they were speculating that maybe a overnight truck had parked on it, but I don't know if that's uh how accurate that is.
Okay.
But once I reach out to uh. To the um manager on on duty or on charge, I'll let you guys know and.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Absolutely. And January third, I'm going to be, um, weather permitting, I'll be going out and doing the uh water meters.
Okay, good. All right, any questions of Jason, Water Sewer? If not, thank you very much and appreciate you coming in.
Absolutely. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. You too, Walt.
Merry Christmas to both of you guys.
Okay, Ed Dumas, Town Police Chief.
So last uh two weeks, we had sixty-five calls for service. Uh, our biggest ones are thefts, agency assist. Extra constables, traffic stops, that's all I have at this point. I did have an accident today at the intersection of. The entrance of the Green Plaza caused by one of our uh, what do they call themselves uh? Eggers, I guess.
Okay.
Solicitors of money.
One of our what?
One of our uh people like to solicit money down at the entrance of your own Plaza. Ran, walked, basically ran in front of traffic and caused a slight fender bender right there. Uh, when I showed up, they were all gone, but. I, at this point in time, I know where they have a right to uh beg for money, but maybe we can just. Put a sign there, some say, no, not here, not, not at this location, go someplace.
Well, it's interference with traffic is what we're concerned about.
Yes.
Um, okay, questions for our chief?
Yeah, I do.
Yep, Sharon?
Yeah, um, Ed, I just, I I know you keep a running tab on how much. Those staying at the Holiday Inn and the calls you get down there, I think it's real important to keep a track of those because I think they. Will go to our public safety building and the reason that we need um more room because you're getting more calls. Um, in reference to safety, so I think that's important. And to keep, you know, so that JP knows when he's putting all of this together.
So, on that note, Sharon, uh yesterday, uh Deputy of Washburn had a, there was a fight complaint at the Holiday Inn or. Cortina, whatever they call themselves at this point in time.
Well, yeah.
He spent from, I think, a little before eight o'clock till almost two o'clock dealing with the uh. They lot, not really a lodging, he charged somebody with a felony, but they dropped it down to misdemeanor and dropped him off at court, so. But it had to do with uh some clientele at the uh Cortina.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that goes to the, the need for that public safety building and to be able to have a place to. Put people that are the perpetrators, I guess you refer to them as. And and for the safety of the town and the safety of of our police.
Okay, um, I noticed there was one call to the Diamond Run Mall and it was an alarm. Um, why were we responding? Don't they have a company that is supposed to do that?
Uh, I'm not aware of that one. Wonder, which one is that, what page is that?
Uh, it's on the third page, way down toward the bottom.
I don't know, alarm. Not sure, I have to check with Ted on that one.
Yeah.
I will find out.
Okay, thanks. That's the only one, so um, but they were supposed to be taking care of that with their own response team and. Um, okay.
I'll find out, take yours and get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions from the select board? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas to you too.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas, Ted.
All right, next, Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chris.
Uh, the past two weeks, uh, we've proud, we've had, I forgot to count how many calls, probably only like five, all mostly car accidents like usual. Um, we helped Mike Rowe out a little bit, we filled the hockey rink up at the town school forum. We're gonna go back Wednesday and add a little bit more so the kids can start skating here, hopefully soon. Uh, we did a quick little parade with uh Toys for Tots from the GE on Windcrest Road. Uh, to the Mission and Santa was in the crowd. And it's about all I got, uh chimney fire season's here, so we got all our stuff ready, but. You know, if you guys just want to make sure everybody's got their chimney clean, that'd be good.
Okay.
Other than that, I have nothing else.
Check your smoke detectors. Yep.
Can we go down, back to the police for a minute, please?
Uh, well, let's finish off with, unless it's related to what Chief Clark is about to talk about.
Oh, I thought it was done.
Anything else for Fire Chief Clark? Okay, thank you, Chris. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Chief.
Thank you, you too.
Back to po, back to police, Ed?
I'd make a motion that we approve this memorandum of understanding between the Rutland Town Police Department and the Chase Green Mountain Limited Partnership. Uh, right now, we don't have many tools in our box to deal with people down there and this will give the officers. Uh, the right to enforce uh the stop signs and other traffic ordinances. Um, in that Green Mountain Shopping Plaza area.
All right, I did see it. Was this one that was?
It's item C in your package.
Okay, item C in your package, Sharon?
Yeah.
It's a memorandum of understanding. It allows uh essentially our police department to issue a no trespass order. Against individuals who might be breaking local or state law or the posted rules of the Plaza. Motion's been made to approve the MOU. Is there a second?
I seconded it.
Motion's made and seconded, any discussion? Go ahead, Sharon.
Nope, it's fine.
Okay. Anyone else? Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor of the MOU, adopting the MOU and using it um with Chase Green Mountain Plaza, please say aye.
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 I didn't hear you, Sharon.
I said aye.
I'll vote aye, I, uh, okay, thank you. Um, and I'll vote aye, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you've got that. Thanks JP. All right, next on the agenda. Mike Rowe, rector, he did email me yesterday, he is um working a basketball game, so he's not going to be able to. Uh, be here tonight. Yeah, so we'll move on to Barbara Noyes, Pulling Town Planning Commission Chair. Good evening, Barbara.
Hi, good evening. Um, couple of things tonight, we had a pretty good um, interesting discussion at our last meeting last week with. A representative of the Win Project for Grandpa's Knob. And um, it turns out um, through some of the mapping he shared with us. That there are quite a few more towns that actually are in the view shed. And um, they include Rutland Town, the city, Clarendon, Wallingford and Mendon. And I bring this up because um, that, the southeastern part of town has a pretty. Um, good view of Grandpa's Knob. And uh in their mapping, they have, they color code. You know, how much can be seen from a certain area and um off Cold River Road. And down at um Route seven and Middle Road, just at the Clarendon line. Um, there are some um pretty, looks like maybe some significant views. Of 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 the turbine, the proposed turbine. They did not do a photo simulation of those areas like they did aboardman hill, so we asked them to to do that for us. Um, and you know, there was some discussion about those, those photo simulations. Uh, they are uh through a camera lens and not necessarily what you see, you know, with your eyes. There's, there is a difference. Um, and we asked them to come back with some information about. Uh, what this turbine, what the blades and the lights at night would look like. Compared to the communications tower that's there now. So uh, we're hoping to get that information back from them pretty soon. Um, other than that, it was a pretty, it was a a good presentation, a really thorough one. Um, with the exception that um, some of those areas. Um, especially in Rutland Town, we're not, have not been documented yet, and I can put up a map if you'd like to see them. Uh, not all of you, uh, you know, those in the room would be able to see this off the TV screen. Would you like to see that or? Want me to?
Yeah, if you're able to do it, yeah.
Okay.
So are other towns now becoming aware that the view shed is greater than what was originally mentioned?
Yeah, I think so. Um, they have a um, a five-mile view shed. Um, and a ten-mile one. And um. Uh, even uh Boardman Hill would be in the the ten-mile one, that's about seven miles out. So, can you see this map?
Yes.
Okay, so this uh zoomed in on on twenty and twenty-one are Boardman Hill. Um, and Quarterline, there's two sites there um that they've kind of addressed. But this eighteen and nineteen over in the eastern part of town, um, they did not and you. The darker the purple there, the more visible uh the knob and. And you know, the turbine will be. So uh, those areas actually have more purple than what they showed us at Boardman Hill.
Okay. Well, thank you, I'm glad you're staying on top of that. Um, maybe we can. Can we post this um somewhere on the Wet Town's website so folks can take a look and be with maybe a little explanation about. If if you live in the dark purple area, you're probably going to see this explanation.
Yeah, we can do this, zoom in and I also have the five-mile uh radius view shed and and the ten-mile.
Okay.
That we could put up.
Uh, in meetings, they have a website that has all of these renderings, all their fixtures, all available. Together, so we can link the website.
Yeah.
Rather than everything individually.
Well, but I I would start with this map because that does sort of pinpoint areas and then link to the website for follow-up. That would be good. Thank you.
Barbara?
Yes.
Is there a timeline or an approval period? Are we going to be asked to take a position whether we favor this or we disfavor it?
Yeah, it'll go through the Certificate of Public Good process through the, the Public Utility Commission. They have a lot of uh assessments and studies to do um first off, and that's gonna take uh about a year. And they expect um that they will file their CPG next December. And so there will be a forty-five day. And so there will be a 45-day notice where we'll look at everything they compiled at that point. We can make comments then. Um, and then, um, there will be, the, the, the full application will be filed after that 45 days where we can still, um, comment, be a party, um, et cetera, to the process.
Okay.
Uh, they, they have, they have already a contract, um, for the power and the price, so that's all set in stone.
Anything else?
Um, from me?
No, it was actually, any other Select Board members have questions? It doesn't sound it. I have one, or just a comment included in your packet, um, is a rent, uh, aerial view and lines for the center Rutland, um, Pocket Park. And it shows, um, now where the ownership lines are, and also there's little numbers on there that show all of the various ideas that have, um, cropped up, but the Planning Commission is, um, attempting to coordinate and put into eventually a plan for the use of the area. So I thought at this point, it would be nice for the Select Board to know what's being thought about. I think the next step is, uh, meeting with Green Mountain Power on this?
Yeah, yeah, it looks like we can meet in January and, and just talk about, you know, um, you know, how we can share that land or, or whatever arrangement we want to make.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, good.
Yeah, so there's, there's 15, um, ideas there. They don't include all of the historical related ideas yet. We're still working through the options there. Um, but those wouldn't be as physical as the ones on that map, you know, actual trails and parking spots and things like that. So, um, you know, some of the things that were historically related, um, is, we were talking about a website that would link to the Rutland Historical Society, the State Historic Preservation Site, um, maybe Vermont State Tourism Sites, um, and educational materials. And on that website, you can do a virtual walking tour of, of the, the park area and everything that's gone on there, um, through the centuries. Um, we're also sorting through what store, what side of, what sort of signs and storyboards we should have on the site. And, um, and the possibility of maybe some actual walking tours of Evergreen Cemetery, um, and over to the Rutland Railroad Museum. So we're still working on those, um. And, you know, we still have the public meetings coming up to kind of winnow down some of these ideas, or maybe find out new ones to add to the list.
Have we set those public meetings yet?
No, um, they have not been, they have not been set. They'll be in early 2022.
Okay, very good. Right, any further questions for Barbara or the Planning Commission?
No, Barbara, just to go back, uh, you know, it's just, it's swirling around in my mind here to your, uh, answer to my question about the wind turbine. Um, so there's going to be no determination on public good or no good, uh, for at least a year?
Well, they, it's not of, I guess, the right way to look at, it's not official yet. It's a proposed development. And, um, to put an application together for a certificate of public good from the state, they have to go through all of these analyses, engineering and environmental, um, studies, and get the results from those so they can put them in the application. And then the application process starts. And that's when it's most public at that point. But they, they, um, this representative Sam Carlson is, is, um, very open to, to meeting with towns and scribing the project as they see it right now. Um, and, um, you know, I can't, I can't fault them for not being open at this point in the process, this early point in the process.
No, well, I hate to, I hate to take the, well, I don't hate, but I don't seem to be taking the position of the developers, but I guess I'm arguing process because these people are going to be spending a lot of money. I mean, they're going to be spending a lot of money without having any decision on the part of the towns that have visual impact of, of this project, who may say no, and save them a lot of money, but yet they're going to go through this whole year of spending all this money before the towns even get a chance to say whether they want it or they don't want it?
Well, I thi- I think in, in a sense, the towns are being given that chance. Um, they've been meeting with, you know, Castleton and Hubbardton. Um, and so, yeah, they're going out to the towns. Um, they're finding out that most of the town plans and the regional plan, um, actually prohibit this kind of, uh, scale of development, uh, you know, for wind. So, um, they are, you know, they're working with the towns. In some cases, they're offering them a sharing of project revenue, um, to maybe sweeten the pot and, and sway their decisions, if you will. But they are, they are, they, they won't, they will not use this year to not communicate. They, they will come and talk to anyone that wants to, to hear about this, and, uh, they have some things to work out, you know, with these town plans that prohibit this, so.
Well, I commend you for not saying the word bribe.
You can tell it was at the tip of my tongue? No.
Thank you, Barbara.
Okay. If there's nothing else, thank you very much, Barbara, and our thanks and best wishes for the holidays to you and the Planning Commission. Appreciate your work.
Same to you, folks. Merry Christmas.
Okay, Bill Sweet.
Evening.
Good evening.
Uh, so the only other thing when the packet was the, just the current schedule and committee items.
Okay.
Uh, so the nice, small one this time around.
Yes, thank you.
Um, we have not heard back from the fourth property owner on Post Road or the water line.
Okay, what was the deadline?
Uh, it, it's, it's about a week ago.
Okay.
Uh, we had to resend it, but we waited, I waited to hear anything, but I haven't heard back from them yet, so, um, I think, you know, at any point, we want to, I know we're gonna come, we have a few different projects right now, a few different other things, so I think whenever the committee wants to get back together, we can, we can get back and, and start working on that again, so.
Okay.
Uh, but I did hear from three of the four that are, that are definitely interested, so.
Okay.
Uh, we had the bid opening today for the Town Line Road Culvert. Uh, we got, uh, I think, seven or eight different bids, uh, quite a range. Uh, Robert Clark was here.
Good.
Uh, as well as almost all the bidders were, were here, so we had a, a roomful. Uh, Robert has the bids. He's gonna review them, make sure they all qualify. Uh, then he's gonna come back either on the fourth or possibly the 18th, uh, with recommendations to the board for, for the contract, so.
Okay, good. So he's doing the, the chart and reviewing the bids.
Doing all, all the review, um, and, uh, he's gonna reach out to the state contact for the grant, uh, to see where we are in that process. Uh, because we don't, we don't have any feedback yet on award or anything like that, but we, we expect we would get it, uh, and then find out the amount, so he can kind of work that in there too, so.
Good.
Uh, on the desks are the updated budget sheets, uh, and a little note on top of there from them what, what they include, so, uh, this is all of their visions, all the changes, updates, new lines, everything is, is there. Those should all be fairly, fairly accurate and with, with everybody's, with everybody changes from, from last week. Uh, Fire District Five, um, just had their meeting here last night, and they put in a request for, uh, January 17th, uh, is their next meeting date. Um, Andy would again be the responsible one at, at their request. Uh, the only difference with that date is that's, the town office is closed that day.
Did they send us an email?
Yes.
Okay. And that fill out the little form?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Um, so they can schedule all, is there a motion to approve, um, the use of the town office on the 21st?
Seventeen.
Seventeenth.
Still moved. Second.
Um, and with Andy being the person to open and close, motion's made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries.
Uh, we have our schedule from the, the printer for the town report.
Yeah.
Uh, we have to have our complete proof to them, uh, on or before January 20th.
Okay.
So, having town, pre-town meeting on the 18th was wonderful. That allowed us, um, about two and a half weeks of uninterrupted use of this room. Uh, with that changing, we now have five days
Yep.
of uninterrupted space in this room. So, we, it takes about six good-sized tables in here to, to put the whole thing together, so. Uh, so the week of the 10th through the 14th is gonna be the, well, it's probably even be Friday, so by the 7th through the 14th is gonna be when we have to get this put together and ready to go.
Well, wait a minute, if the Select Board is... Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. Yeah, because that would have been.
You'd have been gone the 18th, it would have been perfect. We'd had nice, nice amount of time, so it's a little short, it's a little shorter than years past.
It is.
Probably, it'll be doable, and it's gonna have to be, so, um, unless we do it downstairs, but that's, it's a little.
Chili.
Well, chilly, but it's, it's a lot of running up and down the stairs, making copies and everything, so.
Okay.
Well, we're gonna do our best, uh, to do that. Um, and then, uh, I have, I have changed the overall number of extra copies we receive. I put it down by 75. We, we have anywhere from two to three boxes left over for the last four or five years.
Yep.
Which is a lot, so.
Okay.
It'll save us a little bit of money on printing.
Um, do we have to approve the printer's quote or anything like that?
Nope, we're, we're still under agreement. We have a multi-year agreement, so we're, we're still good.
Good.
Um, so the due date for that is the town report and the mailing list, because we're gonna have them do the mailing again, because that was excellent.
Much better.
So we have, we have the timeline. We have, we have, we have our schedule from them and will be when we need it.
Okay, so all town reports are due from department heads by?
Uh, as, well, no, no later than, than January 5th. That's because starting Friday, we're gonna need to start putting it really together, so.
Okay.
And we, because we have a hard deadline.
Yes, we do. Okay.
Uh, so we're gonna, Kerry's working on communicating with the school on their end of it to get everything. We've got a lot of the, um, appropriation reports, things like that have been coming in, so we've got, we've got a lot of those. I have a couple of department head reports, um, already, but I'm, I've been needing the other ones, so, but we're in good shape.
Okay.
Uh, that is everything that I have.
Okay, any questions for Bill? Um, just as a reminder, could you add to our next agenda? I think we need to vote every 30 days on the, um, mask ordinance.
It's, it's on there, yeah.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, thank you, Bill.
Yeah.
Uh, John Paul Fignan, Town Health Officer, do you have anything for us today?
Well, you've covered the health, the mask thing, which we want to take up at our next meeting. I also reported to you on the inspection of the hotel at the south end of town, which is no longer the Holiday Inn. It is now the Cortina Inn. Um, and they, uh, continue to do their modifications and improvements. They hope to be flying some sort of franchise flag in a year or so after they get their act together.
Okay. All right, thank you for that report, and, um, I know you were part of the inspection team too, so that's
I was.
reassuring that, um, things are getting better down there. All right. Um, committee meetings, I don't know, as we had, do we have any since?
We did have a public safety building meeting.
Okay.
And, um, there's, uh, there's minutes for that, and I'm not sure if it should be in this minutes or in the regular minutes, but I'm pretty sure we, Don had, I had asked Don, and Don had agreed to do a PEG TV on the station with, uh, both chiefs, Chris and Ed. But I didn't see it in the, is it in here?
Yeah. Okay. Number five E, there you go.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, just, he's, uh, they're not here, they're gone now, but, uh, I just, I wanted to make them aware that we gotta get this started as soon in January as we can. Meetings between the two chiefs.
Both Ed and Chris are very responsive by email, Don. That's because they're both running kind of fast. They might not be able to coordinate by phone, but email, like, they, they do real well with.
Okay. Good.
Okay, and then we have a matter to go into executive session.
Yes.
Um, on.
Be very long.
Okay, and I have a couple of things to go into executive session. Yours is on, um, possible.
Contract negotiation.
Contract negotiations.
Prior disclosure, which would put us at a disadvantage.
And mine would be on, um, confidential communications from our attorney and a couple of updates related to that. Um, anything else?
Yeah, where does this, where does this letter come in?
That's one.
That exactly?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
All right, um, update on project list, projects up there. We're making some progress on many of them. We just heard a update on the Pocket Park. The Northwood Trail, Park Trail System, the addition to it proposed by the Rec Committee. Um, Mary Beth Polley has drafted an Act 250 amendment application. I have to re, I volunteered to review it, and I haven't gotten to it yet, so that's on me. Um, so there are other things going on there, um. So we'll just say we've covered that. The next item under new business, uh, board to discuss adding a ballot item to allow the sale of cannabis in the town.
We already voted on that.
Voted on that.
Um, I think, and then Kevin posed the question, Kevin Brown posed the question, yes, I do, I do remember it. Um, Kevin Brown posed the question, was it retail, was it medicinal, or was it retail? And the answer was both.
Yes.
So we're all okay with that. So that's what Kevin will draft, okay? Um, uh, the next is the ballot question for road commissioner. I think Kevin circulated for you the proposed question. We should have it.
Oh, I think our grammar consultant might have something to say about that.
Oh.
Our grammar consultant, oh!
Flew right over my head, JP. Uh, I looked that over, Mary, and it looks fine except for the last, uh, preposition in the, uh, in the wording.
Well, it's pretty short, so why don't you tell me what it is?
Would you read it?
I'm trying to, but I'm also trying to listen to you, so tell me what it is and we can get right to it.
Well, if you read it, I will, because I don't have it in front of me.
Oh, okay, out loud. Shall the town of Rutland rescind its vote to elect its road commissioner for a three-year term of office? And going forward, fill the office of road commissioner by appointment of the Select Board?
By appointment, by the Select Board.
Okay.
And that, the reason being that it isn't, it isn't of the Select Board, because that would be, the, the Select Board would be the ones being appointed, so. The Select Boards are the ones that are appointing, so.
Let, now, um, are folks conversant enough with that, assuming that change is made, to, uh, vote to approve the language to go on the ballot?
I moved with the correction to approve that language to go on the ballot.
And I will second that.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? All of, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Um, aye, Sharon, I, I didn't hear you, but, but.
I said aye.
Okay. Thank you. So motion's approved, and we've got that going on the ballot. Uh, any other new business to come before the Select Board?
No, but I'd like to go back to those minutes so that we can approve them, Mary.
We've approved the minutes of the Select Board meeting.
No, the Public Safety Building Committee.
Are, um, well.
I don't think any motion was made to accept them.
I don't think we have. We have not made, because we've not made a practice.
Oh, not doing that?
I have not, I don't recall that we approved the minutes of any of the individual subcommittee reports. We haven't done that.
Do you recall, Bill? Oh, okay, fine.
They get discussed at the meeting, the subsequent meeting, but.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. All right, any other? Old business was succession planning and storage of department records. Do you have anything you'd like to address to the board? Yes.
No, I don't. I, I had signed in just out of habit. I came, I'm Tom Daley, I came up from Bendington just to listen to the board's discussions on the cannabis article.
Okay.
Simply signed in out of habit when I come into a, into a meeting.
Well, I'm glad you did. Thank you and welcome. Okay, you're just sitting in, listening. Okay, very good.
Yes.
Well, Merry Christmas to you.
All of you folks.
All right, thanks. So I think at this point, we can go into executive session. One is contract negotiations, preliminary disclosure of which could disadvantage the town. The other are issues related to advice from council, confidential information. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to go into executive session for those reasons. Do we need anybody in with us or no?
Need about a
I don't think so. You need a five-minute?
Research, yeah.
All in favor of going into executive session, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, and we'll be in executive session. We're going to take a brief five-minute reset.